We can do a roll call vote, we can. Have Haley, what happened?
Um, so I wasn't able to get in touch with him.
Okay, alright, so let's.
I sent him a text too.
Okay, he's not getting out of it that easily is my point. Um, alright, hi everyone, welcome to the CBA meeting, December 8th. Um, let us start with a roll call vote, Mr. Kindermans.
I'm present.
Mr. Swaim.
Present.
And Ms. Akers-Moore is present and potentially Jim will be present, but we will see. Um, as always, just raise your hand if you would like to speak during public comments. Um, we will mute and unmute and I think that's it, let's get started, 7:00 PM, Concord Academy.
So between the last meeting and this meeting, the board received the planning board's recommendation letter. I don't know if there's anything you want me to specifically go through for the board?
Um, yeah, I didn't know, we got our initial presentation, I didn't know whether the applicant had anything more to present to us, or if we wanted to just get started straight with the. I will applicants, did you have anything to add?
No, I don't think we have anything to add, but just like to get any questions or concerns you have and go through it.
Um, alright, well, with that, um, yeah, thanks for giving that to us, Elizabeth, the recommendation. We got a recommendations from the planning board, voted four to one to recommend granting this special permit. Um, let's, Tom.
Yes. One question and one I need direction. Elizabeth, on your report, items thirteen and twenty-four, they're, they deal with the food of no preparation in the Board of Health's concerns about preparation of food. And the word staging is used in each of those items thirteen and twenty-four. And I just, what's the clarity on what does staging mean? Because I'm assuming that the academy has obviously kitchen facilities elsewhere and that they could prepare foods, bring them over to the Performing Arts Center. But I don't know, I just, I didn't want to tie their hands too tight depending on how staging is interpreted.
Um, so it comes, it really comes down to the state, the food code and um, how a space gets designed to allow somebody to cook, reheat, plate, um, you transfer food from a container to, you know, a serving dish, or it all comes down to the food code. And yes, Concord Academy has other facilities on the campus that have a license under the state food code to, you know, to do everything. Um, and what it would mean is that they would have to do all the preparing, plating, and in staging, you know, whether that's, you know, having it completely, um, you know, a brown bag, the lunch that's all put together and wrapped up and just ready to hand out. Um, they, they couldn't do any type of prep in this, in this space unless it gets approved, um, and a permit from the Health Division under the food code.
Okay, thank you. Second question I had, could somebody show me on which plan where the reserved parking is proposed? Like maybe my inability, but I couldn't find it on the plans.
No, it's a good question, yeah.
JP or Courtney, can you guys help us out with that? I'm not sure which one.
Sure, I'll share my screen. Can you all see my screen?
Yes, I see it.
So just to the reserve part, I'll just flip to it. This is the reserve parking scheme.
I'm sorry, don't worry, where are you highlighting? Oh, okay.
Okay, I'll go back, I'll go back to the beginning, but um, yeah, I'll start from the beginning, it may be easier. Existing parking, just to run through these, these diagrams with you all, current situation. This is what was submitted to the planning board. The reserve parking, and I'm going to flip to another, another page here. Reserve parking adds another double bay of parking here and additional parking on the other side of Main Street here.
Okay, okay. And until that's called upon to be used, if ever, what would its cover be initially? Would it be grass or?
It's currently just mowed lawn.
Okay, okay.
Well, and, and I think there's, um, correct me if I'm wrong, for the north side of Main Street where the double stack parking is, um, all the little red dots and on the south side, all the little red dots are trees.
So, correct, yes, trees would need to be removed and paving added to accommodate the extra, the additional parking.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Tom, I accidentally muted you.
That's okay, well, that wouldn't be the first time.
Sorry.
Uh, good, no, that's helpful, thank you.
Um, Theo, you have anything?
Yeah, I just, I just following up on this, on this parking, um, the reserve parking. How? I'm always wondering, how is this gonna be, um, how? Who makes a decision in the end to, uh, to say that these reserved spaces are needed? And, and what will be the trigger? That really is, you know, if there is.
Yep, so the zoning bylaw is very specific. Um, it is the building commissioner acting as the zoning enforcement officer, which is specified in, um, in, in the zoning bylaw, but specifically in this section under reserve parking. Um, it is, um, if the building commissioner determines that, you know, there's, you know, issues are, are happening or, um, zoning complaints are being, you know, submitted to him, or he makes, you know, an observation that he feel is directly, you know, tied to the school and, um, the, you know, the parking on Main Street or, um, specifically in the planning board's recommendation letter, they talk about, you know, let's say, you know, five years from now, um, the select board and public works decide to get rid of, you know, all the parking on one side of Main Street to make a dedicated bike lane or something. Um, you know, that would obviously be a trigger. The building commissioner brings that back to the planning board, um, for the planning board to hold a public meeting and go over those issues and concerns. Uh, and then the planning board would make that finding, uh, whether to require the applicant to construct the reserve parking or not.
Yeah, and, and I, and I get it if there's a clear trigger, right? But you know, I'm, I'm not expecting Paul to be, you know, checking out the parking along Main Street every Saturday to see how it's going.
They don't. Yeah. No, if I, if I could add to this, because I'd like to kind of get into where, I mean, there's a lot of great things with this plan. Um, and I love returning the floodplain and everything to naturalize that. I am a little bit, I don't want to use the word baffled, but a little baffled that what we seem to have relied on here was purely the applicant's parking study. Has there been any peer review? Has there been any neutral, I mean, not to say that it's biased, but I am just in this situation where a zillion times over we've activated parking analyses. I'm kind of surprised that this isn't a case where we would ask for a professional analysis and just go ahead with what the applicant submitted. Was there any discussion about it at the planning board?
There was not.
I, I'm a little baffled. I mean, I think this is a key, this is a key portion of Main Street. Clearly, there is some concern about the parking. Why it wasn't even thrown out there to do something is interesting.
Well, if I, if I made Tom, Tom Curran's president of DSK and resident of 544 Cambridge. So in addition to our own traffic report, I think also the project was put in the context of recent traffic studies that have been done in the area. And so there's been, you know, a number of studies done, and so we put that all in context.
Okay. Um. Tom.
Yeah, I, I, I still then, you know, I'm still, I am, I am stuck on this, I think, uh, just that indeed, why rely on public parking if you can, you know, build, take care of your own needs, you know?
And it may be that it's, that it's okay, but I, this is when you would call in someone to give us expert opinion who is not the applicant, in my opinion. So I guess that's where I stand on that.
So Ruth, can I just answer this from Concord Academy, Don Kingman? Um, we relied on previous parking studies that were done with Cafe Nero, the library, all within the neighborhood, and they showed an excess of parking in the general neighborhood, not necessarily specifically in front of Concord Academy, but in the neighborhood within a five-minute walk, there was two hundred odd spaces available on average. And we relied upon that. Um, if you look at that as a peer review, a technical review, it extrapolated that into what we've presented to you today.
Uh, I mean, I understand that. To me, you've presented some very specific reasons why this should be looked at differently from other parking um, in terms of it being this academic institutional use. And again, that's where I think an expert on that kind of use would, would be helpful here. Um, Tom and Theo, feel free to disagree with me, but I'm.
No, I, I, I agree with you, I mean, reading through, uh, the, all the recommendations that that Elizabeth put together, um, I was, you know, it, it is all very clear, I just got hung up on the parking and, and.
The area.
And you're also, you're adding, I mean, I read through this and it all makes, I, I'm not saying that it doesn't make sense. I'm saying that relying on this without our own kind of further, you know, expert analysis seems a little strange. And also, you guys talk about, you're keeping the existing Performing Arts Center and you're adding it. But it seems to have been a little bit glossed over the fact that, you know, oh, this is going to be replacing, this is fewer seats than already exists, but you're adding these seats, correct?
Well, no, so you're assuming that we're going to have multiple uses during the same period of time. So the existing Performing Arts Center is really going to be our assembly hall. We're a four hundred student school that seats four hundred students. That's where our assembly hall is. We need a more intimate space for the craft of theatrical presentations. And that involves both the onstage people along with the backstage people. And so we've downsized that to a hundred and seventy-five seats. And, and that is going to be our primary or sole use of where we do theatrical presentations. In addition to that, we're having a hundred and twenty-five seat music hall. Um, but that's going to be empty, more than is going to be used at a capacity that we're talking about.
Okay.
Um, I suppose, I suppose, yeah, I may disagree with you somewhat on this because I, I, as you know, in the past, I've looked at a lot of traffic and parking kind of issues in my earlier life, and I was impressed by the detail that they gave us. In addition to which, based upon some of the prior permits, the boards have had to deal with traffic issues. And so unless we have.
What prior permits are you talking about, for the school?
Yeah, for the school, for the school.
You might argue that these were granted for the school already and that now we're adding some space to it and we're asking again for more relief.
Oh, agreed, agreed, agreed. But it strikes me that unless the figures are inaccurate, and at the moment, I don't think we have any reason to believe they are, then I I happen to concur that instead of saying you need to have parking, uh, for your full number of employees, I think they did a good job of identifying how many will be on campus at any one time. And that, then breaking that down and putting in reserve fifty-seven places, which is what, twenty-eight percent of the number they need? I found that very persuasive. Now, I may not like the parking at all, ever on Main Street, though I agree there are plenty of vacant spots from time to time. So I'm not, I don't think, even if we had a traffic specialist look at this, I'd be very surprised if they came up with any different result than what we see presented by the academy.
Or, or, or different, different enough, right?
Yes.
Potentially, but they, to your, potentially, I agree with you, but on the other hand, we're just the laypeople relying on that data. And Theo, to your point about what triggers, you know, this, so they're just gonna, you know, what, so, so Concord Academy comes back and says, no, it's fine, you know? And that's essentially what I've read in this planning board report is they've said, it's fine, there's enough parking. We've put someone out and counted it enough, so why didn't we come back and say you want, need the fifty-seven, you know?
So, so, yeah, yeah. So I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in, um, in. So I don't, I don't think the planning board ever, you know, gave the position that, you know, they just think this is fine. Um, you know, the planning board had, you know, some of the same concerns, but also, you know, trying to look at, you know, they, they aren't, they aren't asking for relief from parking. It's not that they don't want, they can't build two hundred and four spaces. You know, Cafe Nero needed relief from parking. They had no ability to build any parking spaces on their property. Same with the library. But, so the planning board looked at and tried to, you know, think of the balance of, you know, this, this parking, you know, is there, it has been used by Concord Academy for decades. Um, and, and kind of had, you know, the, the, the same discussion that you're having, but ultimately looking at the balance between utilizing the, you know, spaces that are, are there and not creating, you know, parking on the campus that more than likely won't be used because people are still going to park on Main Street. They, they, you know, they, they can park on Main Street, they don't have to park on the campus. So I, if you know, the planning board had somewhat the same conversation and just trying to look at that balance. If the building commissioner comes back and, you know, a couple of, you know, a, you know, a couple of years and, you know, presents, you know, here's issues and problems and things that, you know, have, you know, keep coming up, you know, day after day after day after day. You know, the planning board has, you know, a, a meeting, public meeting to discuss this, uh, would more than likely, um, you know, send out notice to a butters and, and have the, you know, have the detailed conversation about what's happening and either, you know, and make a determination to direct the applicant to construct the reserve parking, you know? Or not, I, I mean, I, I, I can tell you what's going to happen, but I can, I can tell you that, you know, that's, that's somewhat the conversations that the, you know, the board had and, and trying to, you know, strike that balance and and that's, you know, I, I think that's what they conveyed in their letter.
And, and, yeah, no, and I, I, I can understand it and from a logical, you know, reasoning point of view, I can, I can understand the process by which these reserved parking spaces are going to be built. But, you know, I just, you know, and it's clear if there is a trigger, you know, as you said, if there's a bike lane coming, all these, these spaces are gone, you know, then that's clear. But the, the, there, it's not, I, I doubt it ever is going to be a clear process. You know, at one point, there is, it's going to be a mess on Main Street and, you know, I, and it's, it's going to be, there's no parking, the library has an event and, you know, they have more events and and parking gets more and more, uh, gets more pressure on parking spaces. And, and at one point, then, does somebody say like, let's have Concord Academy build their spaces?
Well.
It's, it's, it's not going to be an, an easy process at that point in time. And Concord Academy said, it's the library that has all these events. Why should we build our spaces? That's sort of, it's, it's, it's going to be an ugly process, that's what I'm, I'm afraid of.
Well, because, because, because this applicant has asked for reserve parking. And if there, you know, if there is issues with parking in Concord Center and it's just, you know, day after day after day, then it's sorry, it, you know, there's, there's issues with, you know, parking in Concord Center, you need to build out your reserve parking.
Okay, I mean, I think we understand that point. I mean, when it comes down to the practical sense, you're, they're getting rid of fifty-seven spaces that are currently on campus. Correct, is anyone disputing that? So.
They're, they're, they're not building fifty-seven spaces.
What currently has two hundred and four parking spaces, they'll have a hundred and forty-seven.
Correct.
So how is that not going to affect what's going on, on, you, all these? The analysis that was done was based on having these extra parking spaces, correct, in existence? I, I'm not saying I wouldn't get there, I am not there quite yet. And I agree with Theo that it's a little bit haphazard to just say, well, if there's an issue later, because you're exactly right, Theo, it's going to be, well, Emerson Umbrella, this and that. We have a concrete number of spaces there now, we're going to have fewer spaces there. It may work, it may not. So far, I've been presented with them having counted parking, which may be exactly what the, someone else does, but it, I'm not, I'm just not there, this felt very not completely vetted, if I'm being honest.
Can I just weigh in on the parking, on how we did that work? So I worked with Jim Newton, who's on this call, and we did it in April. We specifically picked the week after April vacation, so it was a representative sample. And we picked three times that we were doing, and the first time we did the counts, we both did it together. And then subsequently, I did all the counts myself to record the data. That's how the data was given.
Okay, um, I, I mean, I understand. I mean, I think Theo, and I mean, I don't know if they'll be still agree, but I think it's Tom on, um, with what opinion here and they.
Well, the one thing that supports your view and Theo's concern is that because it's such a principal location in the center of town, along with all the new development of the library, which I think we're going to find increasingly used by the public, based on what I know about what's happening there. That area is going to become more bogged down with traffic, just by its nature, I think that will happen. Therefore, if there is reason to say, if somebody were to say, well, we as a board, you really did not look at the parking very carefully. And therefore, to have an outside expert either confirm the figures that the academy has presented or suggest some adjustments might be very helpful to everyone to show that it was very carefully considered.
I think that's well put, better put than I put it, thank you. Um, and again, not to say that this isn't the result we come out with, but I do think it would be sloppy of us to just, to not have someone weigh on this with an expert.
So, so I, I, I'm just going to push back as a representative of Concord Academy. I think we've done that. We've looked at the traffic studies and done them again with Cafe Nero, call it three minutes down the street versus our neighbor right across the street from the library. And they all came up with the same information that in a five-minute walk of the, that neighborhood area I just identified, there's two hundred and, Jim, forty spaces available on average, just something like that. So we are using empirical data to help inform our decisions. And we're also creating this parking reserve plan. If it doesn't work out, we're trying to show you as a, a good neighbor and a a steward of the, the land that we have, that we could accommodate if we have to, but we're trying to balance this green space versus pavement space.
I, I don't disagree with you, uh, and I do agree with what Tom said, that we are, you are balancing interests and we are balancing interests and that what we are a representative of is the town and we need to do our due diligence. Someone, an applicant, any applicant comes in with a certain amount, and especially in some places, sensitive with their, their data, I have continuously seen us get expert, expert opinion outside of what the applicant has presented. That doesn't seem unreasonable to me. What I suggest is that I open this to public comment, we can circle back to this, but if there are any other issues.
May, may I?
Yes.
So I also would like to reinforce the point that Don was making. There have been, uh, various, uh, traffic and parking experts that over a number of recent years have determined that there is not a parking problem in the center of Concord. And so I think that those have been, uh, through private applicants as well as the towns, I understand it. And so we are, we are simply trying to draw on that, the information that has been produced over the last several years and suggest we don't continue to pave this really valuable piece of, uh, real estate when there is plenty of parking capacity.
It seems to me, because I don't think we're disagreeing with you, and I don't think we're doubting the data that you've given to us. However, given the other comments that have been made, strikes me, you have two good choices. One, since the library, I suspected a traffic study, and maybe there were some extensive ones done for, uh, the umbrella as well as Nero. Those traffic studies may be available to you without much charge. And then you could, if they're current, that may give us the data and the comfort that we need. Alternatively, you could hire your outside traffic expert because it's a very narrow assignment. So I don't think you're going to find it would cost you very much, but it's a narrow assignment to say, hey, we need you to confirm or disaffirm what we've presented to the board by way of the traffic studies on the parking, on the parking. And they can either rely upon some of the other traffic studies you can get for them, or they can do their own. But I would think you could do that fairly expeditiously and at not a great cost.
And Tom, we've done that, that's the result of.
But we don't have that, but we're, we're reliant, what I think is being said is, because it sounds like we're, that we're doubting your, your integrity, which we're not. I don't doubt that you did it, and I could easily become, as I think I opened up and said, hey, I'm comfortable with all of your data. I don't think we're going to find a great deal, if any, difference if you had the expert. However, if you had the outside independent person confirming what you gave to us, I think that would give the board and the town a lot of comfort.
And, and, and I think, I think that's, that's especially important since we're relying on a, uh, public resource, the public parking, uh, to, uh, to help the applicant in this case. And we need to be stewards of that public, uh, resource.
Yeah, Tom, go ahead.
Well, Tom Planner, Elizabeth Hughes, could you just help us? I believe you put together a report, I, I think it maybe went to planning, I don't know if it's here.
Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm fairly certain that the board got along with this recommendation letter, my memo that went with this.
Correct.
Yeah, we got it.
Regarding the traffic studies. Um, but, so if I'm trying to understand, Tom, um, Tom Swaim, board member, Tom Swaim, um, and maybe Tom and Don can confirm. It was my understanding that, um, the traffic consultant from Vennessant Associates that did the parking and traffic impact assessment for the school, um, did utilize the parking studies that were done for the library, the umbrella and Cafe Nero as part of his assessment. So I, I believe their traffic consultant already had those reports when he put together his traffic impact and parking assessment.
Well, if that, if that's the case, then wouldn't it be easy for Ness Hengen, which is a highly reputable firm, to put forth a letter saying, we have reviewed the data to confirm we reviewed it and justify it, or whatever they say, but that would be fairly easy to confirm and there wouldn't be an additional study if they've already done it. I, I guess if they've already done that, why wouldn't the academy have submitted that as part of their report?
I believe we did.
Is it not, is?
None of this made it on the planning board.
Is it not on the website, on your ZBA website?
I'm, I'm looking for it, I'm not finding it at the moment, maybe, maybe, maybe it's there.
We submitted information to GW Engineering relative to our analysis that we did with VIA.
Yeah. There's plenty of DSK memos about parking.
I mean, I know, it did not make. I mean, I know it did not make it into. Mentioned by the planning board. Um, all right, what I, what I'd like to do is, can we open this to public comment? We can come back to this. All right, let's, um, let's go ahead and do that. There may be none, but, but let me open to public comment. Uh, I think there's none. Okay, good. So we've done that. I'm going to close that. Um, as to the other, I, I guess I have much fewer concerns, obviously, with. The height and, and floodplain and we, we can review that stuff, but I think this is where we're, we're going to get caught up and. Um. Tom and Theo, I guess.
No, I, I had, I had. So actually just said, I had no issues with any of the other stuff, the height and the floodplain and.
I agree.
Compensatory storage, that, you know, that's all was pretty straightforward. Um, it's just a need to parking that, uh. Were I had some concern, concerned about that were just depending on, uh, public parking to make this work, it feels.
So to your point, Tom, if it's not that hard and the data already exists and it's going to be fairly, um, and we're just. Crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, as they say, um.
Ma- uh, Madam Chair, may we share screen?
Sure.
Thank you for recording.
So on the Jim Newton, DSK Architects and Planners, resident at five twenty seven Old Bedford Road. Um, on the website, uh, one sixty six Main Street Transportation Impact Study. This document, uh, was submitted by Vanessa Associates, and this is the assessment, I think, that Don Kingman and Elizabeth Hughes were referencing. Uh, relative to the review that was done by Vanessa and Associates of both the traffic impact and the parking, uh, proposed for this project.
Whoever's scrolling, can you stop scrolling so we can?
Sure.
Thanks. Sorry, getting a little dizzy.
Um, so what I can add, it's, I've, um, I think it's like page five. Um, so this same traffic consultant did the parking, um, study for the library. Um, and I also believe, um. This traffic consultant did the parking study for, um. Either the umbrella or Cafe Nero, I can't remember. Give me two seconds and I can.
I believe it's Cafe Nero, Elizabeth.
Yeah, so this, so this letter, I mean, what's the second part? Can you scroll down? So based on our review of parking demand studies that have been conducted of public parking located within an approximate five minute distance of campus. Sorry, I'm having a hard, I'm getting old. I'm having a hard time reading this.
So to your point, um, Tom Swain.
Yes.
I just confirmed, uh, the traffic. Consultant for Concord Academy is the same consultant that did the parking analysis for the library and Cafe Nero.
Okay, good.
Okay. So.
Yeah, that's.
This is my, well, this is.
That's what we were looking for, really.
Parking demand study was conducted in April twenty twenty two, which was what we're talking about, is that this was done by DSK.
It was a combination of C A.
And.
And DSK.
So.
So I'm, I'm. Count, counting spaces is counting spaces. I, I.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not even if you have somebody else counted, you know.
I, I mean, I, I just, I, I'm going to be honest, I, this planning board. Report just felt a little, it would be burdensome to do this, it would be burdensome to do that. I'm not sure it would be burdensome, but we can go on to some other things. Um, traffic and parking to figure out safety, uh. Demonstrate that the proposed driveway improvements have adequate intersection site distance. I, I mean, if we're just going to say the applicant is, it's too much burden and this is okay, and we're, then, then fine. I mean. I'm not sure if I'm fine, but I felt very uncomfortable with this, that we're basing it just on their data.
Yeah, and.
And we're also, and I'll tell you another thing I feel a little bit uncomfortable with. Is the fact that you're, that you're saying that you're adding two, there are now going to be two performance spaces, whether or not you call one a. Student assembly area and want a performance space. The fact of the matter is there are two now, two different places with more seats in them.
That doesn't mean we're going to use it that way, though. I mean.
Doesn't mean you're not going to use it that way.
But we have, we have a chapel of four hundred and twenty students.
And umbrella, and. I think we're opening ourselves up to, I mean. I, I'm open, Tom and Theo.
Yeah, no, no, I, I.
I just have a gut reaction that when I read this, I was like, this is, doesn't sit well in terms of having been. Vetted, but.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I think, you know, we can have somebody else vet it, but you know, I, I'm, I'm sure. The other personal firm. Won't find a discrepancy of a hundred spaces, you know, there, there is, there's going to be, of course, it's different time. Year, there is some, there is, there is, there is a change in numbers, but that's going to be. I think in the margins.
Okay.
I, I, that's, so that's. I, you know, I know, uh, Vanessa here, um. You know, worked with them plenty, so. Um, I, I trust that this report is a, is, is a good report, you know, that's, that, that is accurate. Um, so I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm just still struggling with the fact that, you know, we're using a public resource to make this all work, kind of. Um, and, and that's. That's, that's the one thing that sits. Doesn't sit just right with me at the moment.
Theo, how do you get over the hurdle? It is a public resource anyone could use. Um, I understand your concern, but the library, for example, your example. If the library increases its programming, which given its new facilities, it could, and I think it's already started. They could take up and use all of these spaces legally.
Right, right, but, but, uh, Concord Academy is required to have a certain amount of parking spaces. Um, and they can build, and, and they, and they can build them. Or at least a good part of them, but it's like, hey, we have spaces in the street, let's just not build ours, let's use the street spaces. You know, and I'm, I'm, this is a bit, you know. Maybe not nuanced, nuanced enough to, to express it this way, but. That's, that's the point that I'm struggling with.
Okay, so we're shifting away. You're comfortable with data. I'm still struggling with it, but I'm thinking about it, but I'm still struggling with it and. Um, now we're shifting to what the planning board member who voted against this project. I had kind of, you hinted at in this, in this letter. Elizabeth, you want to fill us in a little bit on what that planning board member said?
Um, I. I don't have much more to add than what was in the letter, uh.
So was.
The board member that did not vote in favor, expressed support for the overall project and the construction of the Centennial Arts Center. But had concerns with the applicant's request to formalize the use of the public parking spaces. Especially given the fact that the applicant is tax exempt and does not contribute any taxes for the maintenance and upkeep of those public parking spaces.
I mean, realistically speaking, if we walk this through with Theo, maybe this is what you were talking about, those reserved spaces are never getting built. I mean, it's not going to happen. So once we say they're not built, they're not built. So I think what we're struggling with is the consequences of that on the rest of the neighborhood and the library is. A public resource, Concord Academy is not, um, and. I mean, I think if we're getting down to all this, that's what we're getting down to. Um.
Yes, could I ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
Could I ask the Concord Academy, what is the downside for them? If we were to suggest that they, that they not have the reserved spaces, but actually build them out now?
Let me take a stab at this, and I'm going to let, see if Tom jumps in on this, um. Comes down to a sustainability issue, basically. We could. We've shown where we could create spaces. That are needed by zoning, and that would be the two hundred and four. It's at the sacrifice of green space. And as we look at that, there's an asset, a common asset that we all share, and that's public parking on Main Street. Would not that be a better idea to try to use that? See how our numbers work out. If the numbers don't work out to your desire, then we have a reserve parking plan that we could implement. And we could do this incrementally versus I go ahead and pay parts of the campus and I still find people. Freely using Main Street because of where they work or however they're traversing. And those spaces go unused. That is a waste of resource, natural resource in our mind.
Thank you.
I, i- if I may follow up, I, I think that we are really trying to find that balance. And that is the, the sustainability goals of both the town, uh, as well as C A. Uh, the natural resources goals in terms of impervious, um, surface. We've been through H D C in terms of the expression of the campus along Main Street and, and views through to the river. Um, the planning board, uh, and the issues we've had there, and, and of course with the Board of Appeals. So we are really trying to find a balance, and we think that this recommendation does strike a good balance if there was a. Uh, if it was proven that there was a critical shortage of parking in the historic center of Concord, I think it would be a different. Set of circumstances, but given that there are two hundred and forty spaces generally available at any time. Within a five minute walk, we think that this is a, is a creative. Uh, proposal that strikes a balance. I would also add that it doesn't change. The, the partnership in the historic practice that Concord Academy has had with the town, uh, with parking for more than a decade.
Can you elaborate on that?
There have been relief, um, uh. Uh, agreements in place that allowed for this kind of practice. And now we're essentially not asking for relief, we're doing something more creative, which is reserve, meaning Concord Academy will build out these spaces. Um, if requested to do so, but we, we think it's, it's more intelligent in terms of where we are today. To find this balance and not pave more of the campus, not cut down many, many dozen trees. Not create more impervious surface, if we can do that, I, and it, it appears through all the various traffic studies. That the center isn't going to be negatively impacted. That doesn't mean that there has, doesn't have to be some enforcement issues and we've got to be very careful of neighbors, et cetera. But it, it really feels like we, what we are trying to do is creatively strike that right balance. Thank you.
I, I'm, again, I don't disagree. I think it's unrealistic that these will ever be built if we don't have them now.
And, as, especially since, you know, they, they not going to be built now. One of the reasons is because there's nice mature trees on, 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 in that area, you know, like. Try to cut them down, you know, ten years from now, you know, then.
Right.
That's, that's never going to happen.
And I think there should be balance struck, but the bottom line is Concord Academy, which is a private institution, is asking to build more space and ha, and be. If you want to call it, to use more resources. And the question is, and maybe will come out, that it's fine, but is that, are we okay with that? And do we feel comfortable that it's not going to create so much of a burden? I understand the, I understand Cafe Nero is not looking for spaces. I mean, I, I get the arguments that you guys are saying. Um, it's unrealistic to me that those fifty seven are ever be built. If we're comfortable, those fifty seven do not need to be. Used, that means that there are fifty seven fewer spaces than there are right now. If we think that the fifty seven fewer spaces on campus don't result in anything impact to. Main Street and to, to all that surrounding area, then. I guess, okay. But I think we have to assume that they're never getting built, and that's my, that's my.
So, so I'm, I'm just going to, from a, from a, um, a town staff perspective, um. I'm, 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 I'm going to disagree with that.
Okay.
You know, if, if it, if it comes down that, you know, those reserve spaces have to be built, then. Then there'll be that process where they will be required to build them. Um, if. You know. If it's just. People's impression that, well, you know, just, they're not going to be built now, they're never going to be built. Then what's the purpose of having that? Be something that somebody can have it in the zoning bylaw. To allow somebody to request that.
I just, I just, I'm not comfortable that there ever is going to be a trigger that says, and now we need them.
And that trigger is going to be.
And then, and then.
It can be coupled with a debate over who's causing, you know.
And they, right, right. In the effort to, uh, see if we could get a compromise here, Concord Academy, answer me this. Could you, could you build? Half twenty, uh, six, twenty eight? Could you put in the twenty eight units, uh, parking spaces now and keep the balance in reserve?
With, can you help Thomas?
Without causing a lot of damage to the trees, et cetera.
So I think what we could do is, if we had to, we could add an additional ten spaces. Which would then show a no net increase impact on what we currently are historically been using on Main Street. We could do, I think we could do that easier. When we go beyond that, it gets into a whole other parking panel and we start taking down trees and additional grass area.
But you could add the ten onsite now.
I think, I think we could make the ten work, yes, I do.
Without tearing down trees, et cetera.
Um, yeah, maybe. A couple of trees, but not in the dozens that we would have to, should we do the full build out of the reserve plan?
Thanks, Tom.
And Theo, and it answered yours, strikes me. I've been around Concord a long time. And if the traffic gets as bad as we're concerned it might, for various reasons. There will be plenty of people that are going to blow the whistle. Now, it is not a clear black and white trigger, to be sure. But the minute that the police start getting called and or the building department starts getting called, I think there will be a trigger date. At some point where Elizabeth's going to get a lot of calls, saying, we gotta, we gotta come to grips with this. And so I find that of less concern, because I think people are not shy to express their concerns.
So let's see one thing relative to, will these spaces be built, you know, as we think. Futuristically, in five, ten plus years. We put a lot of time into the reserve parking plan so that if we had to, we could implement it and still give us some institutional flexibility. So we're prepared, if we have to, that we'd have to build these out, but we're hoping that there's. And understanding that we have a shared resource and allow us to use that, and if it does trigger this, we can accommodate that need.
Yeah, so, so if, you know, and I, I, I'm still convinced that these spaces will never, will, will never be built and, you know, and I'm fine with that, you know, I'm all about. Uh, balancing the resources and. And, and saving trees, um, so assume they're never going to get built. And, uh. We a- a- agree to these recommendations, then we. And this gets back to what Elizabeth said earlier, you're on. Uh, that we'd be better done, make sure that. These parking calculations, calculations are correct. Right? Because that's.
There is correct as I could.
Easier, what I'm saying was almost not having the fight about whether or not, you know, it was more just. You know, having this verified, but.
Yeah, we, we pulled together all the expert work that's, that's been done. It all seems to be in alignment, so there's been a lot of work done in, in par- parking on town over the last several years.
Uh, Elizabeth, uh, could, could we make a condition that? The, the permits granted on, but, um, one of the terms would be in the effect that. They must return to the Z B A within, say, five years. I'm just, I give an hypothesis here. Within five years to review the parking arrangement and the use of the reserve space. Could, could we make a condition like that?
Sure. Although I'm, I am, I am going to put out just the, the one caveat, um, and. In two and a half years, um, none of us will want to visit Concord. Um, you know, they're, they're expecting at least two. You know, they're they're expecting at least two hundred thousand extra visitors for the twenty twenty five. Revolution celebration and 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 none of us will want to try and go through Concord.
Yeah, imagine imagine how much C A could run out their spaces for.
But. Yes, that's that's perfectly, that's perfectly acceptable.
I think, Tom, I I think that's a really great idea. I think it addresses their always concern, it addresses my concern. I would add to it that maybe they come back with some data for us, you know. I don't I don't know what that looks like, but.
So already there's, you know, recommended condition that they do the same, you know, that the. Parking analysis be done again. So after occupancy, they do it April and, you know, October. So I mean, it's going to take, you know, a year and a half to build, you know, at least a year and a half to build this. It could be less, could be more, you know, who knows how long it takes to, you know, get. Windows and doors. I I still don't have a door to my office and that was since August. So there is that condition, but to Tom's point, yes, you know, you can you can easily. And and you can even have, you you can have the applicant come back. You know, with the data from April and October. Whenever that may be in a year and a half and have the conversation with the board and then come back. You know, another, so a year and a half to another three and a half years after that.
Elizabeth, we reviewed the document that you gave us as proposed conditions and. Part of that was the April and October after certificate of occupancy, parking counts and a school is comfortable with that condition.
I think, was that coming back to us or was that coming back to where where is that condition?
Well, it doesn't, yeah, and while you're looking, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me that they'd have to come back until after.
Yeah, that's the last.
Celebration because that's that's not fair to them or anybody else.
Yeah, I I agree with that.
It's the last condition and no, they would provide that information to the building commissioner. So that the building commissioner can make an informed decision on whether to. Elevate that to the planning board for, you know, to have. The planning board determine whether reserve parking should be built. There there's no, there's. There's no requirement that, because this is a special permit, there's no requirement that. You know, that information can be brought back to the Board of Appeals. And and not the building commissioner and it can be the Board of Appeals that. Makes the determination on whether the reserve parking, you know, should be built or not. There's. There's no requirement that it has to be, you know, the building commissioner and the planning board. That's just specifically how it's addressed in the bylaw.
Okay, I think that solves our issues, Tom. Nice work. I will hire you at some point for legal advice. I think I I think so, and it's not to be tough to be tough. This is our, this is our main issue is the zoning board is parking. And with such a sensitive site, I I I just, I think maintaining some sort of realistic control, which I don't think is. There's a complaint and then the reserve parking kicks in because I think it's too nebulous. I'm very comfortable with having you come back to us, check in, and maybe we say we never want to see you again. It's fine. We do that with other special permits. I don't think it's unreasonable.
Is it the consensus to first amend that last condition thirty four and have? The parking analysis from April and October to come to back to the board instead of the building commissioner? Is that the first?
Following this, okay, so the applicant should submit to the building commissioner, so it would be submit to the zoning board for review of parking analysis. And then what is a parking analysis? Like, what are we, what does that mean?
Well, it's.
Same same as always done, so that we can compare what was done and what's. Is currently or definitely time in place.
When they come back with it, is it actually like we're meeting with them or is it just that they're submitting it to, say, you, Elizabeth, and you're looking at it and?
No, when it when it gets submitted to the Board of Appeals, it comes back to you and comes on to your agenda. As an administrative item for discussion.
I think that's good.
Yep, I agree.
When when is the project anticipated to be completed?
So we're hoping to possibly start this spring and it's a good two years. For completion, so if we start in the spring of twenty three, it'd be somewhere in twenty five.
All right.
And then twenty four begin at twenty five.
Then the then the then the dates of April and October, and I'm looking at the item thirty four of the planning board recommendation. Those dates of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five probably should be. Twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven.
Shouldn't it just be April and October and depending on the date of issuance, whenever that is?
It's based on the certificate of occupancy when that is issued, that then we start the the timeline moving forward.
Well, yeah.
Just that it says twenty four, twenty five in here and I think it could be twenty six, right?
But twenty but twenty twenty five is not going to, that's the big time when all the activity is going to happen, right? Of the of the celebration, so that doesn't make any sense, I don't think, to have them do a traffic.
To be to be honest, we were also struggling with inflation on this project, as you know. So to say that I'm convinced it will start next spring, I'm not so sure of it, so I'd like some flexibility there. To make this work.
Personally, don't mind the flexibility.
Twenty six, twenty seven?
I mean, I I also, yeah, I mean.
I can, that's fine. We can live with that.
Well, well, we could be more flexible, say that you will do their traffic reports commencing. For the for the third and fourth years following the issuance of the C of O.
That's acceptable.
Because that way we don't get hung up on a year, but but that's going to get you by twenty twenty five.
Thank you.
Okay, so. Mending on the fly here, condition thirty four is going to be. The third and fourth year following the certificate of occupancy?
Yes, in the months of April and whatever it is, October.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a really nice solution.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. And then the ten parking spaces, how do we think about them?
If if we're comfortable with what was, we kind of think we've just agreed upon, I'm okay not to do the ten spaces.
Agree, agree.
I agree.
Yeah.
All right, I think that got us everywhere where we wanted to be.
Okay, so just so, just so I'm clear, the condition shall read. The third and fourth years following the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall submit to the Board of Appeals. For review and parking analysis conducted in April and October. In the same manner as documented in the Concord Academy West Campus Parking Overview. Dated July twenty eighth, twenty twenty two.
Can we? And for the for the, almost for the sole purpose to decide whether reserved spaces.
Yeah.
Should or should not be built.
Yeah.
Okay, so the the board shall. Use this information and input from. Town staff on determining whether the reserve parking spaces should be constructed or not.
Yes, yeah.
All right, you got that. I'm, listen, I'm not sorry we're being tough because I think it got us to a good outcome, but I'm glad that we came up with a solution. Because I don't, I don't think it's any of our intention to build more spaces than we need, but also not to carelessly. Grant something that has bad consequences later on. That's that's what I have to say. So with that, does someone want to give me a motion?
Yeah, I'd I'd like to make a motion to. For the special permit type plan review on a section six to eleven, seven to. Seven, seven, two, eight, seven, seven, two, twelve. Eleven, six, and eleven, eight, seven, to construct a sustainable center relocated and we. Relocate and rehabilitate existing dwellings, two twenty Main Street and Ides Cottage. Verticizing attached garage at two thirty eight Main Street into a dwelling unit and other associated site improvements at one. Sixty six Main Street, Basel seventeen oh seven, with the conditions as laid out. By the town planner and.
So the 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 question is whether the board is going to adopt. The findings and recommended conditions is outlined in the planning board's December sixth letter.
Yep, sorry.
Okay, no, that's from.
With our addition with.
But the amendments made tonight.
Great, all right, great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Mr. Swaim.
Hi.
Ms. Akers-More, I am. With any luck, none of us will be on the board when you come back, so maybe there'll be an easier bunch than we are.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody, for your time. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So. I need to.
We have to go to another.
Apologize, I have to go jump to the historical commission meeting now.
All right, thanks for your help with that.
Yes, thank you so much.
Then enjoy your next meeting and we will.
Thank you.
When you're done there, you can come back here.
Yeah, we'll still be here, Elizabeth. You know we will.
Did Jim show up?
No.
He did not, so. Thank you.
Barbara Kohler, seven, ten. Hi.
Hi there.
I hope you enjoyed that and.
Pardon me.
Oh, hi.
Hi there.
Okay, go ahead.
So my name is Barbara Kohler. I've been a Concord resident for twenty five years, raised three children in this town. Bailey, my dog's going nuts one. Great, so I've raised three children in this town, have great friends here, great neighbors. This summer I remarried and my husband and I would like to make Concord our home like for years and years. So we have a request tonight that Marshall will walk through the details of. To add a first floor master bedroom, so we don't have to keep going up and downstairs and also can have wide. Doorways when those become necessary and also to keep the garage that's on site, just so we don't have to always shovel out the garage. So our request is really just about aging in place. And I thank you for taking the time to consider this and I think Marshall will now kind of walk through.
Great, thank you. Yeah, if you want to share your screen, is it?
Me?
Yeah, is that what you were going to do or you were just going?
No, 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 I was unmuting that.
Go ahead.
I'm Marshall McLean, one twenty eight Bedford Street. I'm just going to go through the specifics of the project and the related zoning information. So two oh six Thoreau Street is located in zone C. It's nonconforming for the minimum ten thousand square foot lot area at five thousand four hundred and forty five square feet. The existing house is nonconforming for front setbacks on Thoreau Street and Hubbard Street. It's a corner lot, so we have two fronts and two sides. The project involves the substantial renovation of the first floor of the existing house. To include an open kitchen and family room space in the center section. And a new first floor laundry and powder room and office in the front of the house. The new design includes four hundred and four square feet of addition behind into the side of the existing house. Which will which will house the new primary bedroom and closet and a small extension to the. The living room space. That's the existing right there on the screen. So the 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 plan in the middle is the first floor. That's what we're talking about. So. The one with the the elevation indicators on all four sides. So that that big space in the middle is the current living room and there are two rooms in the front on the. Hubbard Street, on the Thoreau Street side, on the right hand side there. And the back section, just for reference with the four small little spaces is. Is a one story, is the one story addition to the rear on the rear side of the house, which. I'm going to get to will be torn down and rebuilt. The rest of it will be renovated in place. So let me see, so. The project also includes new new steps and a small covered porch on Hubbard Street. And a small uncovered deck and steps on the interior side. Maybe you can go to the first floor plan, the proposed first floor plan. Yeah, there it is. That's that's it there. So. The the two story part of the house. Is where you see the kitchen and family room and everything to the right of that, the the office, the laundry room, the powder room. In the front of the house. And everything to the left of the kitchen, including the new mudroom entry at the top left corner, the. The dining area and the the new primary bathroom and a little bit of that primary bedroom. Is existing now as a one story structure, which will be torn and that's existing nonconforming. Because you the setback, the front setback off of Hubbard Street, which is at the top of the plan. Cuts right through the middle of that dining area. So it's nonconforming and our plan is to rebuild that in place. Obviously, getting no closer to the lot lines than is currently existing. And then everything that is new footprint. Is kind of called out at the bottom of that of the plan there and that kind of hatched area, if you were to take that and slide it over. On top of, that's what's new and that's one story addition to the existing footprint. The in addition to the the proposed gross floor area new footprint, there are the two. Porches, one on the Hubbard Street side, top left corner, which is a covered porch. With steps and that and one on the bottom of the plan, which is just a. Open deck with steps down. That's all conforming. Everything that is living space. Falls within the inside of the setback line, so it's all by right in terms of zoning. These the this the only part that's, so the steps off of the new mudroom entry there. Those are extending now new. It's it's not living space footprint, it's it's but it's covered porch footprint into the. Front setback line, the Hubbard Street front setback, but it's it's extending in as we're extending. We're asking to extend the nonconforming structure against which it sits. And it's pulled back away from Hubbard Street so as to not increase that nonconformity. So that you can see the plan involves a new open kitchen, family room, dining area and then. A primary bedroom with primary bath and closets. And the renovations I talked about before. The if the the final piece is that the proposed. Four hundred and four square foot gross floor area increase. The proposed is increasing the gross floor area for the property by four hundred and four square feet. And this will exceed the floor area ratio for the lot by three hundred and fifty one square feet. And we're asking, we're seeking special permit approval for that additional area. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer questions.
That's great. Thank you very much. That was a great overview. Any questions from other board members?
Not for me.
No, I'm fine.
Okay, let me go ahead and open up to public comment. Any public comment? No public comment. All right, closing public. Oh, sorry, Peter Ferguson, I see your hand.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, go ahead. Just introduce yourself and give your address.
Yeah, Peter Ferguson, two eighteen Thoreau Street. When do you guys talk about the impact of public sewer?
If you would like to raise that, you can raise it right now. We will address it when we speak again.
I'm raising my concern about the impact of the public sewer and how that ties into the line because. The two abutting houses share a sewer line and that's going to be, that impacts what I have to do with my sewer sewerage. So I don't have a tie in in front of my house, which the town. I don't have a tie-in in front of my house, which the town, um, I mean, it's going to open up things where I put in requests for a different waterline placement on Willow Street. Um, but the town refused to at that point. They said that they were going to tie in on Thoreau Street. And then when they actually ran the new waterline on Thoreau Street, um, they, it was, they said it was too deep. So there's, there's going to be some impacts to sewer line for myself and, uh, the Sneed's next door between us. So we need to discuss that further, please.
Right, thank you, um. Paul. You still there, Paul? Uh, Haley, do you know what?
No, he's still here.
Uh, okay, oh, there you go. Hi, Paul, you're on. You have any comments on that? You're on mute. Please not. Oh, no, no, there you go, okay. You're not on mute. I don't know what happened. Uh, can't hear you.
I can hear you. So, uh, so I, I'll, I'll have a question and, uh, for, uh, Miss Interfame. Um, is a renewed sewer connection being proposed? For this, uh, for this property?
Um, well, there is, we, we, we discovered late in the process that there is a sewer line, common sewer line, which does run through the property behind the two abutting properties on Thoreau Street. And, um, I think plans are, uh, Barbara has been in contact with the water department to try and get, uh, the engineering done and the, and the sewer line replaced uh, with, and Barbara, speak up, because I, I haven't been involved in this part of it as much as you have, I think. But I think three new individual lines, correct?
Yeah, so we discovered when we were digging to see where the water line was for the new project, that there is a shared sewer behind our house. We did not know that. There's no easement on my property. There should be. Um, our two neighbors are involved, the Sneed's and, and Pete Ferguson. Um, what we've been working with the town on is trying to figure out exactly where that sewer pipe is because they could just line it, that's possible. But ideally, they would allow the sewer to be connected on Thoreau Street for both of our neighbors and we had been uh, in touch with a contractor to get us a price to do all three houses or at least those two houses at a, some kind of a discount. Pete did request, as he was saying, to connect to the sewer a while back and for, we don't really understand the reasons why that, that was denied at the time. But the sewer department has said that they would be willing, you know, to, to do so, should we put in application then in, um, in, in April.
Okay, so in that case, then, Mr. Ferguson is gonna maybe be in better shape having done this. Um, Mr. Ferguson, does that answer some of your questions and then Paul can follow up? Oh, sorry, Theo, did you have something else to say?
Yeah, yeah, so it doesn't, it, 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 to me, the, uh, addition to the, uh, to the house does not necessitate, necessitate a new sewer connection. There is one in place. Um, that's what I understand. There is one in place that is just.
Yes.
A bit outdated, needs to be updated, needs to be formalized.
Yeah, it's.
You name it, but there is one in place and, you know.
And this will not affect that, but it sounds like now you've opened up discussions again. The water department is not against.
Well, it may need to be partially rerouted if, uh, depending on where, we don't know where it is exactly, so it's unclear at the moment.
Yeah, but, but it's, that's just something that you discovered in the process. It's not being necessitated by this addition.
Right.
Well, might need to be relocated because of, rerouted because of the addition. Is that what you're saying?
Possibly, depending on where it is, yeah.
But either way, it was laid in the year nineteen hundred. I mean, it, it should be updated.
I think there may.
Okay, so it's, it's coming out into Hubbard Street?
Yes, it comes into.
Okay. Comes through your property, okay.
Okay, so if it, if it has to be rerouted, it can still either be one line or it can be split into three. It sounds like Mr. Ferguson wanted to have an additional have a separate line and wasn't able to get that. And now it sounds like they're amenable to that at Water and Sewer. I think I've summarized that. Paul, do you have anything to add?
You've got something to add, but nobody can hear him.
All right, um, Mr. Ferguson, does that help?
Um, so I guess the last question I have is, so with the change in the, where in the process does my waistline or the impact to that waistline and the cost that I incur, where, where is that in the process? Is that part of this process? Is it part of the building permit process? I just don't understand.
Okay, we're gonna try to get Paul to be able to completely lay that out.
Paul, do you want to dial in on the phone?
You, yeah, do you want to call us? You call, can you hear us?
Um.
Haley, you want to call, you can.
Uh, I, I don't have his number off the top of my, um, I don't have his number saved. I can certainly, if I can find it.
Paul, email your number to Haley.
Uh, uh, or he can just dial into the number.
Okay.
If we, if we.
If we can't reach him.
Yeah.
Does it make, uh, it sounds like, uh, at least from my perspective, I have no objection to the project. And if you and Theo also have no objection to the project, other questions, we could simply postpone this one until the next meeting because I suspect not much is going to happen over the holidays and I would like to think it won't impact the applicant negatively.
Yeah.
And we could then get, get the answers to the questions because I don't, I don't have a comfort level. I just don't know the answers.
Yeah.
To that question.
No, good, good call. And also I haven't yet closed public comment, so why don't I do this? Let me see, are there any other questions? Okay.
Sorry, I'm clearly, I'm Charlie. I'm, I'm the neighbor between.
Oh, hi, sorry, can you just, uh, your address?
Two on two Thoreau Street. Yep, I'm the neighbor between those. And yeah, I think Barbara and I have talked about this. I appreciate that she brought it up. I think more clarity around just the cost and the disruption to our property that this would incur would be that clarity would be helpful and I think, I know that Barbara's been in discussions there, but as the person between these two properties, I would appreciate that. Um, uh, that information as well. And, yeah, and from the project, I think we're very excited for Barbara to be doing this and we're looking forward to her being a neighbor and being our neighbor for much longer to come. But I think the sewer question is, is something that, um, would be helpful to know.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna close public comment. Um, Tom, I agree with your, uh, your statement, as long as the applicant, that's not gonna adversely affect you. I think what you're hearing is that no one on the board has an objection with this, but need to wrap that part up to be able to make our findings. Is that?
Well, exactly. So like the water and sewer, people are willing to do this, but they don't really let you do it until April, so what would be a good thing to bring back to the next meeting? So folks were, we could get the price from a contractor, certainly. Um.
I think so. Our issue is with, you know, how this affects the neighbors, right? This is, and, um, in my mind, if, if you offline talk to each other and figure, and come back and say, yeah, we're all in support of it, we understand what's gonna happen, that would be enough for me. Tom, I don't know if that's enough for you.
No, that's fine. Is there, is there a way before the next meeting to identify where the line is located?
Yeah, I, I, and I think that's one of the, uh, Mr. Ferguson, that's was his main concern is like, what's happening with my line? Where is it going?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think, and I think that would, you know, need to, need to be done. So if I'm, if I'm correct, Mr. Ferguson is at two eighteen Thoreau, the other corner lot?
Mr. Ferguson. He's two, two down, yeah.
Two eighteen Thoreau, that's correct, thank you.
Two eighteen, so, so you, you going out into Hubbard where you're aligned and not in Thoreau or Willow? That's.
With my waistline.
With. Right, we're.
Waste, right?
Waste, hold on. And so my waistline goes out onto Hubbard. There's a waistline.
Yeah, yeah.
That was later.
And that's, right, and that's, and, yeah, I'm just surprised that it's not going, going to Thoreau or Hubbard.
But I think for our purposes, getting into the nuance of it and it's not, I mean, uh, what we would worry is that you all come back and say that you're happy and you figured it out and there's not going to be adverse impacts to the neighborhood if we approve this, which I guess we can't say right now because we are hearing there might be. Um, is that, is, so does that make sense? We don't need anything formal from the water or sewer department. I would just want the neighbors to come back and kind of had talked and gone through the process, yeah, figured out where the, what's happening. Um, so, does that make sense to this caller?
Yeah, I think that makes sense to me. I think we're, we're just, we have to wait to get the people to do the scoping and then the pricing of the project and then we could come back. Does that, it sounds like that's what you.
Yeah, I, okay, we're getting a thumbs up from Mr. Ferguson, yeah. Um, and I do, so it doesn't sound like that's gonna negatively affect you in timing because you come back to us, you got it figured out, then you're good to go, once we approve it. Um, so that being.
January then, and then we could start after that kind of thing.
Exactly, yeah. And if you're not ready in January, we can just, we'll just continue it.
No, no, we'll be ready.
Great, okay, that's fine. Um, so, um, Haley, you'll have to tell me our next meeting date and time that's available.
Yep, so, um, see, we've got quite the agenda for next, next month, so, uh, seven twenty-five is our next available time?
Yikes, okay.
Wait a minute, could we, could we possibly come up with some kind of a solution that would allow us to that, that's July, is that what?
No, 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 no.
January, no, no, sorry, the time is seven twenty-five.
Oh, I'm.
Seven twenty-five. Sorry, we have to give you a time slot in January. Didn't mean to give you a heart attack. Um, what day, what day in January is that?
Uh, the twelfth, sorry.
Can I have a motion to continue then?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Great, all in favor, Mr. Kindermans?
Hi.
Mr. Swaim?
Hi.
Ms. Akers Moore, I. Great, so we'll see you back in January. Thank you all. Um, all right, we're gonna move ahead, keep going here. Seven fifteen, Todd Goulet, Constantine Lenick.
Yes, hi, my name's Anthony Frosto. I'm the architect for Goulet and Lenick, um, our client, and, uh, we're seeking relief from the front yard setback for a new garage. Um, we have a very challenging site, uh, has been granted relief from the setback before, twenty-one years ago for our house, our firm design for a previous client. And, um, the issue is, is that, uh, much like the last, um, applicant, our new, our our new client is also looking at, I'm getting feedback.
Yeah, oh, okay, I think that's better, you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. So much like the previous applicant, our, our new client has acquired this house and is looking at trying to gracefully age in place for their, one of their sets of parents. Um, and so we have, um, plans to kind of take the existing garage and convert it into a kind of new living space for the project. Um, this has pushed us to look at a new two-car garage adjacent to the house. But the shape of a lot is such that, um, well, I, I kind of characterize it almost like the Nike swoosh with the thin part of the Nike swoosh being the area where the existing house is and where you would add to it. Um, there is a wetlands in the lower portion of the site, uh, and there's kind of almost like a little cliff um, that the existing house abuts to. And, um, directly adjacent to the house to the right, if you're facing it from the front, uh, we are proposing a small, uh, as minimal as we can kind of get it, two-car garage, single-story that, um, there we go, uh, that kind of gracefully connects to, uh, the architecture that's there and abuts into a rear retaining wall, um, and for the most part connects to an existing, to actually two sets of retaining walls, which we would demo want the one in the front to provide access to the garage. And in terms of how we could possibly put any kind of structure on the site to the right of this existing garage area, it's really not possible because of the front and rear setbacks leave so little space. Uh, if we were to conform with the front, we would violate the rear and, and if we, um, want to have a garage that's deep enough for, uh, cars of typical length, we would need to do something that we were proposing. Um, we also don't want to provide any additional hardship to our client by pushing it further into the land. Uh, doing so, uh, encroaches upon an existing utility pole, that's a power pole as well as just, it starts to bury it deeper into the train as you, the train rises in the rear of the garage and that would just incur cost for retainage, uh, for the, for the engineering of a retaining wall. Um, so this is our solution and we are approximately thirty feet from the front setback. Um, the previous variance, uh, that we received, uh, back in January two thousand and one, uh, established a line for the new house at about nineteen feet, twenty feet, so we're, we're ten feet beyond that. Um, and, uh, let's see, I think that's all the detail, really. I think that those are the central uh, details, other than to mention that, you know, if this was a lot that was being constructed, um, by developer with these zoning, uh, requirements, it wouldn't be approved. I mean, because it's an, almost unbuiltable um, lot under the, of the zoning in terms of setbacks.
Um, okay, thank you. Um, this is gonna get legal real fast, right, Theo? You know about this, um. You're, this is a variance, which is not a special permit. Um, Tom, Swaim, let me call in your legal advice for a second. The, the original variance, which I pulled up, does not run with the land.
That's right.
Yeah, so, so technically, their original variance for this house is no longer valid. Correct, Tom?
So.
So you're in a situation where technically, I mean, I'm not saying this would happen, but technically you could be like, you don't have the right to have that house here.
No, 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 this is, this is, uh, non, existing non-conforming. That's the argument.
There's a variance on record. It's a variance.
To, to build this, yes, and at that point in time, it became existing non-conforming in my mind.
I don't think that's how that works with the variance.
Although that may be irrelevant, um, couple of questions before I answer what you asked. Where is Garfield Road? Is it to the right or north on the, where's Garfield Road?
South on the sheet. It's south on, at the bottom of the page.
Oh, okay.
See, the mouse is, the mouse is on it now and you can see that it swoops around just like that. And I think.
Oh, okay, okay.
I believe, here's another, I want to raise something though, that, that Elizabeth mentioned. Um, my understanding is that, um, there was a house that was previously there before the house that's there now, uh, that was, uh, also granted, uh, relief um, or, or was not granted relief, but was, um, non-conforming. And, um, I don't, see, I was in a part of this process twenty-one years ago, um, so I don't have all the details, but, um,
I think, I, yeah, no, I think, Tom, you're right. This is just a legal, I think, to clean it up legally and if you were going to get financing or something, I'm curious about that and you can answer it if you want. I think it's somewhat irrelevant for this discussion, but.
Oh, I don't, aside, going to the, really to the nut of this case, I don't see, I'd like to hear the argument of why this is what's the justification for granting a variance?
And I'm gonna, can I? Bu- before you say that, yes, and right, and, and that's what I was getting to, um, is that what is a substantial hardship for, under a variance is extremely tough to meet and financial burden of having to move the building is not gonna meet it. Um, it almost, you could almost not meet that burden, I mean, unless you're in a really strange situation. You already got a variance for this because it was on a built, an unbuiltable lot, essentially is why it was granted a variance to begin with. Um, the, the variances that came before this are relevant to this variance. Um, so yeah, you can go ahead and try with a justification, but I don't see it.
Um, well, our justification is that, uh, if, either way I understand, uh, the, the language eleven point seven, um, you know, and, as, you know, when it says especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, um, where a little enforcement of the provision of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, so that the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. Um, when I look at the adjacent properties in the, in. When I look at the adjacent properties in the, in this immediate, uh, location. The configuration of all the properties around this location are not like this, this particular lot in any sense. Um. And our client has acquired this. Property at, um. At significant value, um. Uh, with the hope that they could, uh, legally increase in the most modest of way. Um, additional area for their home to do this kind of project, um. And the FAR, you know, if this was a different kind of lot, we would be able to build a lot more land, I mean, a lot more building on this, on this lot. Um, but that's not the lot that we're given, and so.
Yeah.
What we're trying to do is just ask for this small amount to allow the client to. Um. Make a modification to their home so that. Their parents can age in place with them. Um. Which I think, you know, especially since COVID, as you, I'm sure you are aware, um. The pandemic has affected the nature of how we live. And, um, multiple generations, particularly living together, when, I think people are concerned about parents in particular. And this is, this is part of the ar- our argument for why this is a hardship, um.
Anthony, could I?
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
And let me interrupt you for a minute, you have my, uh. Ear when you talk about aging parents, because I'm in that classification, so that one you don't have to convince me of. Now, having said that, uh, if you go back to your eleven-seven, which you were identifying. How do you get over the con, the argument that? The issue needs to relate to soil conditions, I don't think that's the issue here. Shape or topography of the land. Or structures, and you have plenty of land, you have plenty of buildings currently on the land. And the fact that you're trying to build something, which I happen to agree with about helping accommodate aging parents. But I don't think that fact overcomes the issues involved in a variance. Unless you can convince me otherwise.
And, and, and.
You're not gonna be able to, but go ahead.
And, and I, um. The variance is sort of business.
One thing, one thing, you have my sympathy as well, because I think this is a tough legal argument to win. Um, so I'm not disagreeing with anything you're saying on a human level, in terms of purely a legal argument, it's, it doesn't meet the criteria.
And, and, and we gotta be, we gotta be very careful about a precedent here. Uh, because it did, there's a human story, but also, we giving a variance for a garage, we're not giving a variance. For the conversion of the existing garage. In a unit for aging parents, because that's.
That wouldn't be a variance, though.
No, no, but that's, that's what I'm saying, I mean, the argument is for the parent, uh, for the aging parents, but it's, we're building a garage here, what's the? What's the?
Well, they're converting the existing garage into living space, but I think, I honestly, I think it's all irrelevant, because. And also, Tom, I am interested in your question, because I'm not sure that, I think they have to come back before us to get the variance. To reapply for the original variance, wouldn't they?
I'd have, uh, uh, I'd have to think about that one.
Okay, think about it, it's a little bit of a puzzle, I was wondering about it.
And they, they might have gotten financing already, I mean, it was just recently purchased, so.
I will mention that the original variance specifically says, because I, I have it, that, um. The board does not intend the variance to run with the land, nor is it intended to be applicable to any future dwelling or to any alteration or addition to the proposed dwelling, so. Again, I think that the existing variances are relevant to this, um, let me do this, let me open up to public comment. Is there any public comment? I don't see any, Haley, do you see anyone? All right, let me, um, close.
Can I, can I, can I add something, though, can I just, can we just go back to eleven point seven, because you said if there was. Soil conditions or shape or topography of land or structure, um, well. And I think if we talk about shape of the land, um. Uh, it doesn't that speak to that, that the present shape of the site. Once you apply the present zoning setbacks, um, leaves us with. Uh, extremely odd and.
Yeah, but that's, that's not what that means, that means the shape of the land, as in it drops off, you know, into the ocean and you couldn't, uh, you, Tom, you've probably explained this better. But the zoning regulations are there for a reason, the fact that you have a, a line that you have to build, you know, that the, the zoning line does something for you to limit you is not. That's not what that means. Um, like I said, unfortunately for you, and I'm not saying that we like it, you're in an extremely tough part of this, um, zoning bylaw. Almost no one, it, it, it's kind of the rule of practice that almost no one. Grants a variance, Tom, would you agree with that, or that they are to be granted very sparingly? And the case of wanting to build a garage in this does not meet that legal standard, it would be not defensible. I'm sorry to say it, but I'm just gonna say it, so, um. A- any other comment or do you guys?
Can I, can I just, I mean, I understand, so, I, I want to understand where. Uh, the kind of boundary edges are to, um, talking about substantial, um. You know, a- about detriment to the client in terms of. Um.
Financial?
Yes, because.
You're, you're not gonna win that one, I mean, you can, we could send you, uh, well, I could, you could go ahead and look at mass practice on variances, but. If incurring additional costs to build something onto your land is not gonna be considered a substantial, um. It would be a substantial hardship if you had a piece of property that you were unable to build anything on for some, Tom, you probably can think of a good example. Um. You happen to have the only lot, well, that's, it's why it was granted to begin with, right, this was on a really steep. Hill, and they needed to grant the variance to allow them to build the house. That you want to add a garage, and then it's gonna cost more money to move it, or in fact, even if you weren't allowed to build the garage, it wouldn't be considered a substantial hardship. Um.
And I think if you check with any attorney, uh. On the variance issue. Show them this plan, your past history. And if that attorney's prepared to give you a, an opinion as to why the variance should issue. You're certainly welcome to come back and make another crack at this, but I would be a little surprised if you can find the attorney that will give you that opinion.
Yeah. Um, so what do we do, should we with, have us withdrawn, does it matter?
Well, if my memory is, if, if they withdraw, they can come back if we deny it, it's a little hard to come back.
Right, right.
Would I like to withdraw?
If you don't withdraw and we vote and we deny it, you can't come back to us for a certain amount of time.
Couple of years.
No, I, no, I would like, I would, I would prefer not to withdraw, I would prefer to seek legal counsel on this issue.
Okay, well, what, then what we're gonna do is vote, and we'll vote to deny it, and then you can seek legal counsel and your options to appeal it. Uh, Tom, do you agree with that as former town council?
Well, I think, let's say you're clear with the applicant.
Yeah.
If, if you withdraw. And you then seek advice of an attorney and you think you have a case, you can refile. If we deny. And you seek counsel. And you think you have a case. My memory is, you can't come back for two years.
I should, should we?
So you would want to withdraw if you wish to protect your opportunity, that you can come back if you get a favorable legal opinion.
Or, or should we continue so that, uh?
Or you could continue.
You're gonna have, have, as a monitor.
I'm not gonna vote, that this, I'm not gonna vote for this variance, so, I mean, you can continue as much as you want, but I think it's a waste of time. So if he withdraws and refiles, I mean. I, I just don't want to waste anyone's time here, and I think it's just.
Okay, so it's up to you.
It's the genuine to say we might vote for this, um, but if I were you, I mean, I'm not. I agree with Tom, you withdraw, you talk to an attorney, if they say they have a good argument, you refile and you come back before us. Otherwise, you're into li- immediate litigation, right, Tom, because you'd have to sue us for how we. Ruled.
Well, it's, what I'm seeking right now from your advice is the best advice for, for me and my client to. Uh, to try to be able to come back and persuade the board.
Okay, so I withdraw and, and then refile, withdraw, it's like this never really happened, right, so.
Right.
Okay, so, do we have to vote on a withdrawal?
We would accept it, if he, if he proposes to withdraw, we could vote to accept the withdrawal.
Okay. All right, so are you proposing withdrawal?
Yes.
Okay, great, um, do we?
I move, I move that we accept the applicant's, uh, request to withdraw this application.
I second.
Great, all in favor, Mr. Swaim?
Aye.
Mr. Kinnaman's?
Aye.
Ms. Akersmore, aye. Again, I'm sorry, you're, it's, it's such a tough legal battle, but unfortunately. It's, it's how it's set up, um, but we'll, maybe we'll see you again.
So can I ask one, a comment? Um. Given that there is available a space between the rear and. Brunt's yard setback, um. To what degree, if we were able to squeeze in there? Um, would you allow us some degree of going over the line?
We wouldn't, because it was, would all be, as soon as you go over the line, you're into a variance. So unfortunately, the answer is no, we wouldn't let that.
Despite the fact that the whole house right now is closer to the street by over twenty feet.
Correct.
And what is the, what is the, what's the legal justification for that?
I, I mean, I don't want to spend too much time, we've got some other things on it, but the legal justification is allowing someone to, as a really unbuildable lot to build. And the board in the past, which by the way is not our board, so it's, it's, doesn't matter what the board in the past said, we could have ruled the, the diff- a different way. Thought that it was enough hardship that you couldn't build unless that relief was granted, that's what happened, this is a totally different situation, original variance, irrelevant. Um. But, you know, I agree with Tom, if you can find a lawyer who wants to argue the case, then. We'll be here.
Okay.
Thank you, all right.
Thanks.
Uh, and, um, let me just say to that app, applicant, um, if you could send your formal withdrawal. In the form of an email, that would be appreciated.
Okay, I will do that.
Thank you.
I'll address it to Haley?
Yes, you can address it to me.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now at our seven twenty, Julia Minor, John Colbo.
Hi.
Hi. You're not asking for a variance, so that's. You got that?
That's right, we're asking for an ADU that is larger than the seven fifty, um, by right.
Right.
And thank you so much for hearing our application tonight, um, we bought this house about, uh, nine years ago, uh, to a little Cape on Lowell Road. Um. After raising our kids in Lincoln, and I've been at the Umbrella for over twenty years. Um, with, at an art studio, and then also an architecture office in town, so. Um, we're applying to have an apartment that was constructed in twenty twenty-one to twenty-two, permitted as a legal accessory dwelling unit. So the Cape Cod style house, built in the nineteen fifties, is situated on four point three seven acres, and. Do you, um, oh, great, thank you, Heather, that's great, um, we'll just keep going, if I, I, there are a couple of things that I might need to share my screen for, but this is perfect right now. Um. An attached addition completed this year includes a mudroom and two-car garage, adjacent to and above the garage is an apartment on the first and second floors. With two ground floor entrances and a stair landing entrance, all separate from the main house. The structure is a sensitive addition that was approved by the Concord HDC. In two public hearing continuations about the elevation facing our neighbors to the south, there is a lot of collaborative design attention. It's twenty-five to twenty-six feet tall, um, nine to ten feet lower than the legal limit. And fits with the scale and simple style of our Cape, it's natural wood shingle, uh, that will weather to blend with the landscape. The health department approved adding an additional bedroom on the existing septic. And as part of the project, we did necessary landscape work under the supervision of the Natural Resources Commission. Um, this is a long story, but bear with me, a windstorm had toppled an old treehouse, um, along with four or five large white pines. Another tree was dangerously hanging above the mess, and we needed to clean it up, clean up the hazard, because notably, we'd given our neighbors permission to walk in our woods. In the process, we cleared invasive species and unhealthy trees, along with concrete debris and pool equipment from an old pool that had been filled in. We removed a large asphalt area, um. An unsightly concrete pad from a garage that had collapsed under heavy snows. We installed a pollinator wildflower meadow in that whole area, and, um, we also buried electrical wires that crossed our neighbor's yard. And installed new bluestone and recycled brick hardscape. Um, the apartment, back to the apartment, has living or office at home space on the ground floor and living space on the second floor. Um, if you can see the, um, attached. Let's see, Heather, what are you showing?
So this is currently the elevations, are you looking for the?
Um, if you want to show the, um, first floor plan.
Yep.
Or I guess we could start with the site plan first, um, the frontage has a hundred and fifty feet, um, parking, um, we can look at the parking diagram, too. Um. And then, um, the square footage, and I apologize, I just noticed tonight, the square footage is not noted correctly, and I've already corrected it, I can send you a new version, Heather. Um, but if you go to the second floor plan.
Yep.
Uh, there we go, yeah, it says first floor nine eighty-nine, and it's actually, um. What is it, three sixty and six twenty-nine add up to nine eighty-nine, so that's just a typo. Um. So that you can see the second floor has a studio apartment, um, with a tiny kitchen and bathroom closet. Um, across the stair is storage, and then downstairs is, um, the living area on the first floor, if you want to show that. And the first floor, um. I just got the whole amount and then subtracted the area under the stair that doesn't have headroom. So, um. Back to the. Okay, thank you. Um. So we felt that the existing three-bedroom Cape was not the highest and best use for a four-acre site backing up to the Assabit River. But rather than tearing down the small Cape and creating the typical large new single-family home, we felt that adding an ADU to the existing house was a more sustain- sustainable solution. That meets Concord's need for moderately priced, modest housing. Um, it also makes sense for our aging population, for us, we have a first-floor bedroom, um, and. Um, plan to stay, so, um, so, and also just. That as the last, um, applicant mentioned, several of my architecture clients have asked for designs to age in place, and I've seen the need for a caretaker or younger family member to live on site. Um. While the senior homeowner has the convenience of single-floor living. Um. So. An apartment makes sense for that kind of future use. Um, we can go through the diagrams and.
I don't think we, at this point, I think, let's, if you don't mind just holding off for a second, let me see what questions, um, because I know I, I don't have a lot of questions, so, um. Let me ask Theo, Tom.
Uh, could we go back to the site plan?
You bet. Yeah.
Just help me understand for a second, uh, is the proposal that, for the additional dwelling unit. Will that be in the, what is identified on the site plan as the existing? Uh, what is it, one-story dwelling?
The existing one-story dwelling is our Cape, and then right over here, uh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm trying to. I should probably be sharing my own screen so I can mouse it, but, um. The proposed, what shows is a proposed garage here has actually been built.
Okay.
And that's where the ADU is, and that's, um, and I can show pictures.
No, that's fine, no.
Share my screen because.
No, that's fine. Just stay right there, just stay right there.
Okay.
So the propos- today it's a, is, today it's a garage of some sort, correct?
Yes.
Okay, is it connected to the house, or is there a breezeway, or to walk out of the house into the garage?
It's connected, um, the mudroom connects to the garage, we should look at the floor plans for that, I think.
Again, you don't have to do that, because I'm telling you why I'm gonna ask the question. Your, your application, I believe, is under four-two-two-two, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh. And so I just, uh. And so I just for the board, other board members. Am I reading it correctly that in order to get a special permit to the ADU? The space that we're talking about needs to be within the single family dwelling. It's already existing.
Yes. And it is existing.
What? Well, the single family is.
Yeah, hold on, sorry. What? What? So I'm looking at four two two.
Go to four two two two.
And I'm looking at what?
And then the board may grant a special permit for one additional dwelling unit in a single family dwelling. And I'm just raising it because the dwelling unit that they're talking about is in a garage. It's not in.
Well, but look what the next thing is or detached accessory structure.
It's it's attached. It is.
Hold on one sec, though. I just want to point this out for Tom. It is attached, but see how the next sentence there is or detached accessory structure?
Well, I must have an old code because I don't see that.
Yeah, that was maybe you have an old code. This is Theo, are you seeing that? Am I?
It's June twenty twenty one is the one I'm looking at.
And it has those words, right? I have the twenty twenty one as well.
And three two two where?
So. I have the most up to date version. Let me just find the language.
It's getting a little late for all of us, so it'd be good. But that being said, you're telling me that it is attached.
Yes.
Okay. So it kind of answers your question either way, Tom, but I think it's detached as well.
Yeah, that's that's what I was reading it the other day and I'm just now not seeing it, but I I remember reading it that it has to share at least the wall.
No, no, well, I have four two two. Well, all right. You know what? Haley, tell me what you're looking at.
So four two two, let's see. For the purpose of providing a small additional dwelling units to rent in this town that will not substantially alter the appearance of the town. Or for the purpose of enabling owners of single family dwelling larger than required for their present needs to share space and the burdens of homeownership, a building. Permit may be granted for one additional dwelling unit or in it, sorry, in a single family dwelling or detached accessory.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, then I don't have any concerns. I'm sorry.
It's also it's attached, so we're either way, I think we're good. But okay, so no concerns other than that, Tom?
Correct.
Except that we got to get Tom the latest version of the zoning.
Yeah, we have those. We have plenty, so.
Theo, any questions?
No, I just just a clarification, right? So we know that a necessary dwelling unit here is allowed by right. The special permit that we're going to be granting is or it's by right up to seven hundred and fifty square foot. Special permit that we are asked to grant here tonight is for just a slightly larger additional dwelling units.
Nine hundred and eighty nine square feet when we're we can grant up to a thousand.
Right, right.
Any other questions? We we did have one. We can go open up to public comment. We should note that we did have a letter from a neighbor who was objecting to this. We can talk about that a little bit. One thing, this is already built.
Right.
Different situation, right?
Right, right, then the the neighbor has.
All right, let me go ahead and open a public comment and Mr. Comfrey, if you want to go ahead and just state your name and address.
Sure, Tony Comfrey, three eighty three Lowell Road, the butter shown in Anthony Comfrey shown on the on the screen there. Yeah, I'd like to make a couple of points, I think, either of which will I hope lead you guys to deny this application tonight. First, so I'm not I'm not a lawyer or architect or experienced in this, but by my read of your section four two two. If this project, if they had come to you guys and asked for permission to perform to to build this structure in advance. As an additional dwelling unit, it would have been limited to twenty percent over the existing gross footage of the of the building. Section four two two. Though I feel like, given that they built the additional dwelling unit and are now looking to include it as part of their house. Is kind of doing an end run around the whole zoning restrictions. Like the previous people coming to this board have have have. Asked for permission in advance based on the rules. And and then you guys have adjudicated one way or the other. In this case. The original proposal was for an extension to the living area of a single family home that went through the historic district commission a couple of years ago. And as as presented to historic district commission, it was a two car garage with some storage and a loft space. What got built over the last couple of years was an addition of almost a hundred percent to the gross footage of the of the space. With a fully furnished apartment upstairs. With a patio and lighting oriented not toward the minor Caldwell's house and backyard and living area. But oriented with a light and patio away from their area toward us, toward the next door neighbors. So my feeling is this was always intended to be an additional dwelling unit. And in fact, the applicant's letter says that they decided rather than building a big place, they build an additional dwelling unit, which they did. So I think. That seems like a dangerous precedent for you people. They went and built the additional unit. And now, which is way over what would be allowed as a twenty percent increase of the gross footage. And and are now looking for a variance to make that larger still. So.
I'm not understanding the twenty percent where you're getting that.
Maybe I'm looking at the wrong. Version of your.
Um, yeah, if they had originally, okay, so if they had originally intended to build this, and I don't know the history, so you guys will have to tell me.
He's talking about four two two one, which talks about one fifth. One fifth, that's you can do some of that stuff by right. But that's not applicable here.
Yeah.
But that's that's what that's where that figure is coming from.
Okay, oh, okay, okay.
The board may grant a special permit for the altercation of an existing building.
We're not under that section. We're under four two two two, which is the section below that. I mean, it is. True that you built this before it was allowed, before this had passed, right? This by law had been put into effect, so that that is a question, but I the twenty percent is irrelevant for this. I assume what we can talk about this more, but whatever was built was what the historic district's commission approved. It's.
I mean, in terms of the square, in terms of the the outline of that of the building, sure, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, listen, I read your letter and I I totally I understand the concerns and and it sounds like it's part of it was that they've been good neighbors and that they do turn off lights and things. I think my issue is this is already built. You are, I don't know, Tom or Theo, you have any comments?
And that that was what my was, I mean, they they could have built this absolutely by right. They didn't have to be here. If it was seven hundred and forty nine square foot, right? The oh, special permit now is only for the increases of square footage.
So it's it's the, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, we did that. We wanted to have the two exits from the apartment. On the first floor, rather than building an unsightly fire escape or something on the outside, we thought. If you're having. You know, if the space is combined, the first and second floor, then you don't need. Two fire escapes from.
Right.
So that was a design decision that made it grow a little more than it would have if it had just been above the garage.
The concern I'm hearing expressed, which I I can understand is that you've said you were building it. You basically did built it and now you're asking us to permit it.
That is my point, yes.
Yeah, correct. I understand that and there there is that point and then there is the point of. So what do you do when that's Tom and you can talk the practical, the practical reality is we could say tear it down. You can't do it, right? And then they could build the exact same thing by right tape, exit off the back.
No, 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 no.
It wouldn't be that big. It would have to be under seven fifty.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, we could slice a piece of the piece of the rear off, you know, but that, you know. Anyway, there was somebody else from the.
But I don't think it addresses your concerns, Mr. Comfrey, and your concerns is the activity and the visual and this and that. So I'm wondering if there's a way.
Well, there's one thing.
Yeah.
If tech, the technology is well advanced. That if I understood his letter. The upper level of the facility, at least in this, at this time of year, for example, you're going to have a lot of light. Emanating from that building. There are. Automatic shade shades that automatically go down. Was darkness appears and then comes back up as light comes on in the morning. That's a fairly advanced technology. I suspect it's not that expensive. So one could say, hey, on the upper levels, at least at a minimum. Require that they have shades that react to the to the intensity of darkness or light outside. That would temper down the light that shines over on the neighbor's property.
Oh, wait, before I'm sorry, before we get into this, let me take the other public comment.
Can I? I had, yeah, I had two points to make, though. Let me just make it quickly, which is, which is that. I also to to kind of to a point you made earlier, as I look at the this doc, this this building is right up against that thousand foot limit, thousand square foot limit. As I read the 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 measurements delivered. It's actually over a thousand square feet it as as listed. Because there's a number, given the size and scope of this building, there's a lot of area for less accuracy.
If. Okay, that to that I'm going to defer to of the building inspector.
If you. If you look at the width, the width of the building is listed as twenty two feet, whereas internal dimensions are then multiplied as less than twenty two.
Okay, let's let's get the the from the authority himself, the building inspector. Have you signed off on these? Numbers as presented. Okay, so so I understand your concern, but he's the final word on on the measurements here.
And. Given that the measurements were produced by by the applicant, Julia Minor.
Paul, only you can say what you want to say.
May want to check your computer audio, Paul.
We're going to try to have Paul. Paul, worst case, can you email Haley something and she'll say it? All right, in the meantime, Mr. Comfrey, I'm going to take another comment. We'll come back. Paul can answer. Ann Elton.
Hi there. We are the neighbors on the other side of the miners and.
So I can just give your name and address.
Sorry, I'm Ann Elton and I'm four fifteen Lowell Road. And we're the neighbors on the other side. And I think my comment is, you know, the miners have been, you know, great neighbors in so many ways and I. I think that my I've kind of two things I'm thinking about with this application. Which is that? You know, we've done a big project at our house and there are zoning bylaws and I'm very well aware of them. You know, we had an external structure. That, you know, we followed the limits on in terms of internal plumbing or potential uses of. And so as the miners have applied for different types of. Permits over time. You know, I didn't really worry about it because I was like, okay, there's just all these zoning laws and I know that they're going to fall within that and they'll be subject to them. So. You know, in the last few years to have that shift and have that. You know, not be what all of our neighbors are subject to. Is, you know, I I probably would have paid a different amount of attention to the earlier applications along the way that have come through. The the. Structures, you know, it's. It's. Seems and again, I didn't pay attention because I thought, okay, it's just going to follow all of our zoning regulations. It's a little bigger than I thought. It's closer to the neighbors than I thought. There was more clearing in the back than I thought. So now I feel like I probably should pay attention. So one piece is just that. You know, if. If you're gonna. I guess I just don't understand, like building something and then permitting it. After. And the other thing is even I really do believe and Jeff and I both believe in affordable housing. In Concord and across lots of different geographies. But I really can't believe that a policy. Again, like I I really enjoy our miners as the miners as our neighbors, but you know, if we are going to address. Affordable housing, you know, we do need to do it in the types of projects that were, you know, frankly, just scuttled in Concord. And I think that allowing it. In a situation like this, like led, this is not how you build affordable. Housing policy. If you're going to change it. As you know, individual families decide to create accessory dwellings. You know, then that needs to be passed by the entire neighborhood that, you know, decides that they're ready to change minimum lot size and, you know, all of that. You can't do it kind of one off. Property at a time. So this is not a strategy for affordable housing in terms of Concord as a town. So I completely reject that as an idea. I do believe in affordable housing. I just think that this is not the way for. Us to do it. As a town.
Okay.
Um, Elizabeth.
Yeah, can I just respond to that, which is I understand the comment, unfortunately, out of our purview somewhat. This is how the zoning bylaw is written. We're dealing with a certain. Section whether. We think that this is, we're not going to approve this or not approve it based on the affordable housing part of it, I think, and the one of the offshoots of this and maybe unintended consequences of this by law is that you can do this by right. So I I don't disagree with you, but I it's outside of kind of what we're we're working on now.
I appreciate your comment. This is my, this is Jeff Elton. This is the other person who lives. So actually, this entire, so one is, as I'm listening to this, you guys are really, there's a level of responsibility here that I don't think is being practiced, which is. Each step of this project has not actually implied what the next step of the project was. So I really appreciate that people can actually have their own space. They can do their own renovations. But quite frankly, I feel and actually personally manipulated by a process that led to an accessory dwelling that was positioned as a barn. That then actually became a point of residence that then became a point of rental that then. So that's not exactly how actually approval processes are actually supposed to be run. We had an area that was positioned as a man as a meadow that actually went to the natural resources that had felled trees. That went on forever. By the way, this has been a three year process for everybody in the neighborhood. So this is not been a minor process. So when you kind of get to this, this has been an ongoing area. And I actually feel like it's been manipulating certain portions of code in order to advance to the next level of a project. The meadow has never become a meadow. The meadows now become a backyard to a rental property. Which may be a prelude to something else that's next. Everything should be transparent and intent. It shouldn't be manipulating code in order to move to the next step in a particular process. And actually, you guys should be explaining why you're allowing things to move to the next step of a process.
Okay, I I understand the concern that, you know, this is the first time we're seeing this application, so I I think.
But go back, go back to the whole history, please.
Okay, thank you.
No, but don't be so dismissive, literally.
I have no way I'm being dismissive of you. I'm trying to get some information from Haley from the building inspector and then we will discuss. I I've heard what you've said and we will, we're going to discuss it in a second, but I do want to hear what the building inspector had answered. Earlier.
So so I have Paul on the phone on speaker, hopefully.
Paul? Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, so just to be clear, this this dwelling unit is not built already. This minor applied for permit for for an addition and when she applied, we made her, we required that the kitchen be removed. So when we signed off on that permit, the final permit, there was no kitchen there, so it was not an additional dwelling unit. It was just an addition. So she's applying, she's she's applying out to add a kitchen and make an addition dwelling unit. I just wanted to put that out there, okay?
No, that's good information. Thank you.
It's that it's not true. The kitchen is there.
No, actually, kitchen's there and people have been living in this space.
Okay.
It's time to get a little real.
Uh, okay, Paul, when when you expect, I mean, you've been there and when you inspected, you're saying you did not see a kitchen.
No, and I specifically told Ms. Minor to 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 remove the kitchen and not not to put it in when when she applied for it.
Whether or not she did that, we don't know.
Can I?
I'm not sure, but.
Hold on one second. I mean, I'm sorry to seem like I'm being dismissive, but you know, we've been here a long time and I want to try to get through this, so. Hold on one second. I, I mean, I'm sorry to seem like I'm being dismissive, but you know, we've been here a long time and I wanna try to get through this, so. Um, okay, Paul, did you have other comments about the, the size?
No, and, uh, just, 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 uh, just to be fair as well, we only count square footage, anything but six feet eight ceiling height or more.
Okay.
So that, that, that can be confusing to some people as well.
Can you, um, can you stay on the phone in case we need you?
Sure, sure.
Thank you. Um, are there any, um, people who haven't spoken yet? Who would like to speak? Okay, um, let me go ahead and close public comment for a minute because I wanna speak among the board. Um, I don't think any of us are blind to the fact of, of what happens and. You know, I'm not impressed by what I'm hearing from the neighbors, obviously. I mean, it sounds like they feel that the situation has been manipulated. But the other issue is what do you do with that? So we have some choices. We say no, it can't be an additional dwelling unit, so then what happens? I mean.
Then it'll just be a living space. It'll be there just as living space. You know, we'd be interested to know whether there's a kitchen or not.
Is there a kitchen?
There's a half a kitchen. There's a refrigerator.
Yeah, that's, that's.
There, there's no stove. There's a tiny sink. It's a kitchenette. There's a refrigerator. We live, we did use it up there while we were redoing our kitchen downstairs. Uh, but we did not have, we don't have a stove. It's not a full kitchen. It's, it, it's a tiny refrigerator and a, and a little sink.
We, I mean, we get the point, and I, I mean, I think we understand the frustration from the neighbors, but the other frustration maybe from our side, and not necessarily. A frustration, but the truth is that we are limited in what we can do. We cannot say, wow, for the last three years, you've been dishonest to all these people, therefore this and this and that is gonna happen. It's not within our purview. We have. And, and I'm sorry that that's frustrating and I understand it's frustrating, and even if we went back and looked at the record, it's not gonna change what we're doing here. Theo and Tom, please, anything. What do you think?
Well, I.
On a roll tonight.
What?
Tom has been on a roll tonight.
Yeah, Tom, do it. Put it all in a nice bow.
I would personally be more comfortable if we could postpone this till the next hearing. And at least I would, I would take the opportunity to look at the past record.
Sure.
Just so I'm more comfortable with how we got now to where we are.
Okay, I don't disagree with that. That sounds reasonable to me.
And I, I, and then I would be more comfortable to make a decision, yea or nay. I appreciate the neighbors, I appreciate the neighbors' concerns, and I guess I, I feel like I owe them at least. To have a better understanding of where, how we got to where we are.
I think that is very well put. I think now the building inspector is on notice about what's happening. Um, in terms of your kitchenette, we'll just call it a kitchenette, um, and I agree. So you would propose we continue this, look at the record more and come back in a month?
That would be my recommendation.
Theo?
Um, I, I, I can go and go along with that, yeah. Although, as, as you mentioned, I mean. The permit, uh, the request before us is very narrow. We said it before, it's very narrow and, and there's other permits that have been granted on this property that were not our permit, right? National Resources, uh, Historic, so. They decided what they decided, but it would be good to have some, to see whether there were any conditions in there. And what the, what the architectural plans were in those permits.
Agreed.
And just for my clarity, the only application that's, they're asking for a special per, I'm asking whether this is the case. They're asking for a special permit for the unit, uh, under four two two two. That's all they're asking for here, correct?
Correct, unless, um, Haley.
Yeah, 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 and eleven six, yeah. But then, but, and, but, and then only to increase from the, uh, seven fifty that's allowed by right to nine eighty.
I think it'll give us time to reflect, though, and it, it is a valid point that someone does something that's not.
And otherwise, and otherwise it does meet the dimensional requirements of the code.
That's what Paul's saying, yes.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they got a building permit for this, right, so.
Okay.
Right, 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 but it, it's within the setbacks, et cetera.
Yes, yes, yes.
All right. Um, do you wanna make a motion?
I, I would move that we continue this.
I, I'm sorry, I had my hand up. Can I just ask one final question?
Good question, yeah.
Yeah, so, so mark, mark the building in, inspector, so th- this building is forty-four foot long on both sides. Um, if that measure where it goes below six feet eight is off by an inch or so, that's gonna put it over the thousand square feet.
Yes.
So, um, I'm, I'm just asking, uh, you to, and, and that, and the measures as, as submitted with this application. Come from Julia Minor, so I'm just asking you to confirm that you've actually done those, that you are standing behind those measurements.
We, she doesn't have a building permit for the additional dwelling unit. She hasn't applied yet. She has to get approved from the board and then apply for a building permit for additional dwelling unit, so we haven't done, I'll just look at it.
So we, so if we prove it and you go out there and you measure and it's a thousand ten square feet, you'd say, well, you can't have a building permit.
Yeah, she doesn't have a building, she has to apply for a building permit to convert it to an additional dwelling unit once, once the board.
Right, and then she gets, and then, and then once that's built, she applies for a certificate of occupancy. And then the building inspector comes out and measures whether it's all according to the plans.
We do that before the certificate of, before she. When she applies to the building permit, yeah.
Um, okay. Is that, Mr. Comfrey, that answer that?
Yeah, answered my question. Thank you.
Great, okay.
Again, I, they come back, I, I moved that we continue this matter until the January hearing.
Seven thirty, right, Haley?
Seven thirty.
Second?
I second that one.
All in favor, Mr. Swaim?
Uh, aye.
Mr. Kindermans?
Aye.
Is acres more, aye. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, all right, uh, we are minutes. I sent you like a few commas and stuff.
Yeah.
Here, nothing major.
So I, I didn't get a chance to revise those with those, with those comments, but if you want, you can certainly make it a condition that those.
Added some apostrophes for presumptions and things. It's not anything for chattering. Uh, yeah, does someone wanna move approval?
I move approval of the meeting minutes, uh, the last meeting being, come on, something. Which was eight minutes of, uh, the tenth of November.
I got a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Kindermans?
Aye.
Mr. Swaim?
Aye.
Miss Acres more, aye.
So, so, Elizabeth, do me a favor.
Yeah.
Never should start a, a meeting where this should be a short.
Man, that got really contentious, huh? Sorry, the, that got so contentious. It was just one thing after another, but you know what I like about this board? I think we get to the right place, you know? So I really appreciate you guys pushing through and then getting to a good solution.
And, and Tom, as I said, Tom was on a roll tonight.
Yeah, Tommy.
That was, that was, you, you got through that backlog on contract, uh, Concord Academy.
Yeah, I don't know. Still be talking about it if it hadn't been. So I know, I, that was a great solution, so that's what I mean. We, I really appreciate that you guys, um. That we, you know, disagree and then come together with it for a good solution, so thank you.
Yeah, although it was long, it was very productive.
Yeah.
This was an early meeting. Come on, folks.
The next meeting, Haley, cause I don't wanna know.
Yeah, because it's only, there were only four items tonight, right, and for the next. Well, and then the next one, you have, uh, Pittsburgh to invite.
I'm not gonna be able to leave my house after these. I feel like, that's it. Well, all right, well, thank you all, appreciate it, and I'll see you next meeting.
Happy holidays.
Yes, happy holidays, everyone.
Bye.